Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the Isquah City Council Land and Shore Committee meeting for July 5th, 2018. I'm the Chair Stacy Goodman, and to my right we have Councilmember Victoria Hunt, who is filling in, and to my far-right Councilmember Paul Winterstein, a regular member of the committee. We have two items on our agenda tonight. The first item is Agenda Bill 7614, High Street Conversion. And the second item is related, Agenda Bill 7480, West Ridge North Preliminary Platte. We will take -- correct me if I'm wrong. We will take public comment after the first item. We will not take public comment after the second item because it's a quasi-judicial matter and it is a closed record. Hello?
Hello.
We have Lucy Sloman here, Land Development Manager, to kick it off for the first item.
And the second item.
And the second item. I get to do tomorrow. But we're going to start with the first item.
Yeah. So, tonight, you know, in June, we did a kind of detailed presentation and summary of the discussion at the Urban Village Development Commission. And so tonight, we were really focused on responses to the committee's issues and concerns that were identified at the June meeting. And as part of the legislative process that we've split this into, you know, it's partly to ensure that there is an opportunity for public comment. As you indicated, the plat is quasi-judicial, so as we talk about High Street, we need to be careful to sort of not talk about the plat components, but to focus on the conversation related to the High Street conversion. First question was, do we have criteria about public use, public benefit, community benefit? And in looking at the municipal code and the Isquah Highlands Development Agreement, there weren't criteria or even definitions for either of those. But in looking at the Isquah Highlands Development Agreement, it is very much focused on flexibility to respond to a changing future. And included in Appendix M, which is modifications, there is a modification specifically related to the configuration, location, design, or size of roads. And when we review the modifications that are identified in Appendix M, we rely on something that's called the flexibility objectives, which are in the main body of the development agreement. And there are four components to the flexibility objectives: new information, changing needs, reasonable-priced housing, and comparable benefit or functional equivalence. And so, in looking at those four criteria, we feel that we do have new information, changing needs, and a comparable -- something that's comparable or functionally equivalent. And we think that the proposal is neutral relative to affordable housing, or reasonably-priced housing. Any questions before I move on? Second had to do with amenities and process. The preliminary plat is predominantly about the sizing of properties, not the design of properties. However, sometimes, the design of the property is how you can evaluate whether the size is appropriate. For instance, to look at a tract or right-of-way, proposed right-of-way dedication for a road, you have to say, is it wide enough to accommodate the section of the road? Likewise, when you're looking at a park, we're not going to get a detailed design of the park, but we are going to get enough information that the various reviewers who look at the plat are able to say, yes, this is appropriately sized for the plat. So, the process that we typically use as a result of that is, we go through the preliminary plat. If it's approved, then we do an administrative site development permit, and that allows us to sort of dig in more deeply into the design once the basic size and shape of the parcel for a park is identified. That's an administrative process. There is public notice, but not a public process. And the Urban Village Development Commission and public said, we really want a public process. And so, we added Condition 37, which requires a public process. What we've considered to date is using our relatively new tool called Peak Democracy to send out a survey to nearby residents to look into kind of the ideas and preferences they have, collect those in addition to the ones we've already gathered through this process, work with Polygon as the builder, the Isquah Highlands Community Association as the entity that would maintain it, and then have a public conversation about those options with the Urban Village Development Commission and the public. That said, there are certain elements that are fixed as part of this. I don't think the trail has been in question. I don't think the three nodes and outlook are in question. Really, the pieces that I think we're predominantly talking about is, for the three recreational elements, are the right three shown, or should we be considering different ones to better serve that area? What were proposed was swings, a trail, kind of a discovery trail, and a skate park. What was also discussed by the public was either a pea patch or community garden, a small dog park, adult fitness. Those were three of them. The development agreement tends not to be very prescriptive. It's much more of a performance standard. And so, what we did was take the development agreement's sort of expectations and language and write a performance standard for these that would also be part of how we would work with the community and the commission. And that is looking at activities that would be diverse and complementary to the ones that are already either under construction or there, something that accommodates children's play, something that serves a variety of users and ages, and that is not a nuisance. Now, I think some people would say a skate park or a dog park are likely to be a nuisance. And that may be. On the other hand, if through this process, that one of those was decided, that that was really a priority of the neighborhood, what we would want to ensure is that anyone who was buying near there was aware that that activity was present. Because what's unpleasant for one person may not be unpleasant for another. And so, we would just want to make sure that people were informed as they were making that decision.
You mentioned using the Peak Democracy to do a survey of the neighbor -- the nearby residents. And so, I wondered how nearby is defined, and also how you're going to do that. Because Peak Democracy, as I -- as far as I know, is an online tool, and anyone can use it.
Right. So, a couple of thoughts. I haven't used Peak Democracy, so I'm still kind of learning about it. But we do have -- well, we have a couple of tools. One is, we have a Parties of Record list to begin with. We have the Isquah Highlands Community Association, which has an extensive email list. And then we have other lists that we can depend on. I think one essential piece would be to get people's addresses, so that we're able to sort into different sort of rings of influence, let's say. And I know that Communications Department has more experience with that tool, and that it's important how you design it so you get meaningful results and that you can sort them appropriately. And that would be our goal, is that we're really able to ascertain who lives nearby. I've also gotten some willingness from people who live nearby now to help ensure that it gets out to the right sub HOA.
A question along those same lines. So, when you say proposed, like a proposed swings, trails, skate park, where do those proposals come from?
So, when the applicant submitted the preliminary plat, they showed those three activities in their plans. And the reason that they did that was, as I mentioned, that we needed to be able to evaluate what was being proposed. Did it seem to be the right scale and level of activity to meet the plat's needs? And however, whenever we do a plat, even though we always send it, ensure that the IHCA has looked at it, there's always a condition that says there's going to be an additional review between the city and the IHCA once we get through the plat. Because since the IHCA frequently maintains it, they really need to be able to dig into the details once they know that this is moving forward.
And then my other question is about public involvement, Peak Democracy. Is there also a thought to have the Parks Department work with this as well, in choosing what the amenities might be based on what the city needs are? So, one thought I had about skate park is, we just spent a lot of money on a significant skate park, and there might be other needs, even though there might be an interest in many people in that area. I was wondering if there is some commitment to working with the Parks Department so we can balance the needs when we're making a decision about what might go there.
It's a really good point. We have been talking to the Parks Department several times along the way, because we wanted their input. And as you were speaking, it reminded me that one of the Parks Department's, I don't know, work plan items is, Port Blakely Communities put forward money for a mini -- oh, that's a mountain bike skills course, not a bike, not a skate park. But there -- absolutely. We need to look at it within the context of what West Ridge is building, what West Highlands Park has, what other facilities are in Isquah Highlands. And I think that's a great idea to talk to the Parks Department. I mean, we want to draw on all resources. Okay? Views. So, this was -- I'm trying again with a couple of new graphics, so let's see if I've made this any clearer. So, Lakeside Neighborhoods. Neighborhood B, so here's our High Street, and here's the plat would be running along here. Neighborhood B, Lakeside Neighborhood B, is at the intersection of High and Ninth. Neighborhood F is at Ellis and High. And both of these neighborhoods, they're either existing or proposed grading, and the building heights are such that they will be mostly at street level and will block views. So, what the view that would be available would be in this section. And that's kind of what these big red arrows were meant to indicate, were sort of the maximum extent of the view. So, if we look at the area between the red arrows, there are two neighborhoods, D and E, which I've shown on this map. Their building heights and their final grading are such that they will be lower than High Street, and you'll be able to look out fairly well above the rooftops. In addition, as you can kind of gather here from the grade lines, the topography drops away very steeply from High Street, so that opens up a lot of view. There were some great questions from the committee about trees, because we know that trees can block views. And after the meeting, the applicant provided to us a 1996 view covenant that was recorded between Port Blakely and Lakeside that does -- tries to balance two types of views. One type of view that is encouraged is distant views out. The kind of -- the other kind of view, which is not encouraged, is the views into the mining pit. Now, part of that is, some people don't want to look at it. I like looking at the mining. But many people don't want to. But more importantly, I think Lakeside has always wanted to make sure that the views are screened so that it is not an attractive nuisance, and people are not curious to come and poke around in there, because it's really not safe. And so, the view covenant allows for trees that are screening, but not trees that are blocking those distant views. The area that's shown here in yellow, there is about a 20-to-30-foot bench in depth between the back of the curb and the property line for Lakeside. That is where they have proposed to put the outlook, and is a place where we would be a good place to put it. You can see that in the orange line here, and I don't know how well it shows up, but and the orange line here. So, you can see that where it is located would not be blocked by houses, and it's where the ground is dropping away, opening up the view. The one thing I will add is that we aren't really proposing the conversion of High Street, or the applicant isn't, and we didn't endorse it for the views. That's kind of a bonus that we're getting from the multi-use trail. But we are likely to get even more views as Lakeside develops or reclaims the mine pit area. And so, it will be something that is -- that will improve with time as that develops.
Thanks for this information, Lucy. The year of your -- right above the photo, your middle graphic there, you show the pea green, or whatever that color is looks to you. Now, there shows, it looks to be a bench, a flat area above it, or to the north.
This area?
Okay, then above that. So, what I'm --
This area?
Okay.
Oh, oh, you mean all along here?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that is on Lakeside's property?
So, that area, yes.
Okay.
So, this area here is.
Yeah, the white area on your diagram. When I think about a park here, to me, it's about a view. It's about a view.
Okay.
I mean, you want value, you want something to -- you want to achieve the potential that The view, to me, is top of the list. And I'm -- so, I want to make sure I understand this information
Okay.
-clearly. And can you -- so, I saw in the -- it's in the packet, you had contact with the owner-operator of Lakeside.
Tim Lee, yes.
And that agreement, and he represents that side of the agreement. We have Polygon, I guess, represents the other side of that agreement from 1996. What assurances do, would we have, and would the public have, that whether it's along that bench that you've got colored there, wherever, wherever, if we were to build some type of view platform, what assurances do we have that there will, as you've defined it here, where you've defined it, that there will always be a view? Always?
Okay. So, I would propose two things, or at least start with two. One is that the view covenant that we -- the 1996 view covenant is perpetual. It uses that word. So, that is related to the trees. In terms of uses, the development agreement, I think, establishes where buildings can go and the height of those buildings. And the council, any changes in that would require the approval of the council.
So, no buildings outside tract F, as you have it labeled at there?
Right.
Right? So, there would -- it would only be some other -- it's going to be something like trees. That's going to be on their parks, on their land, and that's it?
Right. They don't -- they don't have the right to build other things outside of those development areas.
All right. So, should we -- should this go forward? Should we build a view platform there? Are you telling me that we are guaranteed because of this covenant, because of the agreement that exists, that how far in the future are we willing to predict right now if somebody could stand in that spot and would have -- could see the lake, could see what you're telling us is visible, would be visible there, that that view will not be obstructed?
So, I'm not an attorney. I've read through the covenant. I would be glad to get an opinion from the city attorney to confirm that. But it is, the way I read the language, it is a perpetual agreement between these two property owners, which has the ability to be assigned, that views, that trees may be removed or even topped to ensure the distant views.
So, in the future, down slope from that, from that bench, I'll call that, as that slopes away, there may be some trees, but they would be topped. It would still screen, so it doesn't become an attractive nuisance, but it would still -- I mean, I'm very familiar with, you know, what you have to do to retain these type of views. I want to be absolutely certain that we are certain, that we would go down this path, that we could make a promise to the citizens, that what you're going to get out of here, you're going to get a view.
So, I've said as much as I -- I am not an attorney, and I would want the city attorney -- if you want that kind of guarantee, I would want the city attorney to review it and confirm that.
Well, you did -- you shared your professional opinion. You've read the agreement, and you said it's in perpetuity, and it's assignable, so thank you for that very much.
So, there's probably more to that. I mean, first of all, it was done in 1996 prior to Lakeside's development agreement. So, to Paul's point, it's common, more of a question I would have is, probably would be, if we decide to, if the committee makes a recommendation to do this, then the conversion, and the committee's interested in it, to have the city attorney read it and determine whether or not, even if it's assignable, what does that mean? What is the -- what's the production, the protection? That's prior to when they, there was any agreement with lots. And so, that --
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it predates everything, so it would be
Right.
... interesting read.
Yeah.
A related question is, would Lakeside be responsible for the maintenance of that maintenance of that view aspect of the park?
So, from my reading, there is, it's the person who wants the tree to be changed is responsible for changing it. So, now, that doesn't mean that Lakeside might not say, you want it changed, we'd be glad to go in and change it. Because, you know, they have the right to maintain the screening of the activities below. So, you know, one man's view is another person's screen.
And it may be something where Lakeside agrees that when they do their initial, you know, then when they're initially the, probably the declarant for this development, and they're going to agree that they're going to place restrictions on certain lots for the type of landscaping you can have, and it can't go above a certain height, and if it does, then it has to be.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, it's more than just reading this 1996 covenant. It's probably not going to be able to -- Lucy's probably not going to be able to answer all of our questions. It's going to be more complicated than that.
Yeah. I will say, I did meet with Tim before I had read the covenant, but even just talking about it in concept, he recognizes how spectacular these views are. He is, is more than happy to share those views with the public, and feels very strongly that he has to ensure that it is his responsibility to ensure the public safety, and therefore the screen. I mean, and he said, if we're cutting down trees to put in this platform, that's fine, and he will gladly replant the appropriate trees below it to ensure that it is screening the pit. So, I mean, I, you know, I realize that is just a conversation, and that isn't the same as a legal tool, which we will definitely speak with the city attorney. But I think that there is the willingness to collaboratively find the right balance that's reflected in the agreement. Okay? So, I did also, just to do a little bit more, this was the view that I kind of cobbled together from Street View. That was Google Street View in 2011, before the pine trees had grown up. There are kind of three elements that you see. One is the ridge line of the north fork of Isquah Creek. Second was Lake Samamish, and third was Cougar Mountain. And so, this is approximately where the platform would be. And so, you kind of get a sense of the various views that you have out. Some are near views, and some are distant views. But it is pretty expansive. Fourth was the question about dedicated parking. The example that was provided was Hillside Park, in which Ball Field was built, but there really wasn't any place to park. And if you look at the city's, the park department's website, it says, no on-street parking available. So, in looking at that, this is a little snippet of our GIS. This is Mount McKinley, which is the street that goes into where that ball field is. This is a street view of that street. The pavement is about 20 to 21 feet wide, which is very similar to the width of streets in Isquah Highlands. I think the big difference is that Mount McKinley has no, it doesn't have additional width for on-street parking, whereas almost all, well, all of West Ridge has on-street parking. And so, that as a result, I provided the table that I tried to do from memory last time, which shows that for the West Ridge properties, we're getting typically, you know, four parking spaces per unit, which is basically twice the required parking. And our goal is not to provide a lot of extra parking. That's kind of contrary to the Isquah Highlands Development Agreement. On the other hand, part of the value of having that on-street parking is that there is this shared resource of parking available in the neighborhood that can serve things like this High Street conversion, if it occurs. And that's really consistent with the development agreement, which says that one of our first choices should be to rely on on-street parking. Plus, unlike the Hillside Park, this area will have about 600 residences within walking distance, and that isn't even counting Lakeside. So, and then obviously, even more from a biking perspective.
I think Hillside has a number of differences. Is there an example that's in the Highlands or in a neighborhood that's more similar, where on-street parking is the main parking that's used for a park, and that it's, is there an example that's closer where it's worked like that?
So, basically, the development agreement says you don't provide extra parking unless you have a regional trailhead or a big picnic area. I mean, so in other words, every park in Isquah Highlands, except for the three city parks, relies on on-street parking. So, maintenance, we covered this last time, but I just wanted to touch it again, and I noticed that Sarah Hoist here, and if you have questions, I'm sure she'd be glad to answer them. Currently, the Isquah Highlands Community Association maintains quite a few city facilities, such as trails and storm ponds. And they have been reviewing the plat. They've attended the UVDC meetings, so they're aware of the discussions and have participated in those discussions. Because we already have maintenance agreements, we would either revise an existing agreement or execute a new one, depending on what it needed to have and which was the more suitable Trips. Oh, I'm, okay, trips. So, I had originally looked at the city's website that shows traffic counts around the city, and there was not any off of Ninth and Highland. But I did locate one that was done in late March 2017. I think this may have been part of the city's concurrency, but it may also have been associated with West Ridge development. So, it only, the counts are only done one day at each location, and they're all done within a two-week period. I liked that, because even if they weren't, the numbers weren't specifically accurate, it gave us a scale of magnitude between the various segments that we're looking at. The counts were done between 4:15 and 7:00 p.m., but trips were only between 4:15 and 6:00 p.m. In other words, at all these locations, there were no trips after 6:00 p.m. We consider Discovery Drive a secondary entrance into West Highland Park, because that was not the one that was originally proposed. But Discovery has about five times the trips that High Street does. As we look into the future, we see that there will be a lot more traffic on Discovery Drive due to the West Ridge Shelter Swedish development. High Street is likely to only have a modest increase. The only projects, if it stayed as a road, open to vehicular traffic, the Neighborhood B would probably have a secondary entrance someplace onto High Street, and Neighborhood F that's down here would have its entrance right about here. But it has somewhere between 10 and 60 houses, so it's a relatively small neighborhood. Any questions?
Yes. Okay. So, if my question feels like I wasn't paying attention, that wouldn't
That's okay.
... only be partially true. Because I was thinking about Lakeside, and you might have answered my question while you were talking. In the future, when it builds out, is it, it's anticipated that access to Lakeside developments would be from High Street?
No. No.
Okay.
So, the primary access is up here north of the Park and Ride, where Isquah Terrace currently accesses. However, for these two neighborhoods, B and F, that are essentially at grade with High Street, we anticipate that, sorry, B would have maybe a secondary entrance off of High Street, F would have its primary and only entrance off of High Street. But that neighborhood has maybe ten to sixty homes.
So, okay, and so, those are, those are beyond the part of High Street we're talking about converting?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
We were very, we checked that very carefully.
Thank you.
There was a question about what's the difference in character between, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, on the traffic. Do you also have any information about the speeds? Because I believe it was pointed out somewhere, there's no intersections on that street, but there are on the parallel, or the other.
Here, let me talk about it here, because I think that is a good question. Came up last time as well. Street A, or I think it may be called Sixth Place, is the street that runs through the middle of the plat. Ellis Drive is being extended as part of the West Ridge improvements to connect into West Highlands Park. And there was a question about whether these streets were going, whether their character was going to be similar or different. Street A would have two intersections, one at the Park Drive extension, and one at the Federal Drive extension. Ellis will have a series of sort of small cross streets from the two townhouse projects, as well as alternating alleys. So, that's what you're seeing, is street, alley, street, alley, street, alley. Street A would be lined with homes, the front door would be off of the street, as well as the individual driveways that access their garages. Ellis, on the other hand, will have their homes facing the side streets, and there will not be any direct alley access off of, I mean, direct driveway access into individual garages from Ellis. Both streets will have a similar section of two ten-foot travel lanes and seven-foot parallel parking. And in speaking with Kurt Seaman, he did not anticipate that they would have different speed limits. He assumed that all these streets would be twenty-five miles per hour. Okay. This is an aerial that Polygon provided to us. I couldn't put it in the packet. This is West Highlands Park, the gravel pit, High Street, Ninth, and then Ellis. Do you need me to play it again?
Can you just point out where the Sixth Place, where the proposed?
Sure. Let me go, let's see if either of these show it better. So, currently, this is a townhome, this is the South Townhome project in West Ridge. Sixth Avenue, this is called Sixth Place, or Sixth Avenue, and it would continue and basically parallel High Street until it connected where High Street runs east-west. That's it?
Other questions? Yeah, sure.
In the, in this map, there's a, there's the park, but then there's also a smaller park at the, at one edge. Is that, is, is that part of the conversion?
That's part of the plat. So, let's see here.
So, if it's part of the plat, should I wait until?
Right. I just wanted, yes, but I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about the same place. So, here is the High Street conversion along this edge. There is tract E down at this end, and tract A at this end. Those are part of the plat, and we'll talk about them a little bit more when we talk about the plat as the next agenda item. Are those the ones you're asking about? Okay.
Thank you. Back to Ellis Street, and Avenue A, or whatever we're calling it. And you may have already said this, and if it sounds like I wasn't listening, it's partially true.
It's a lot of information to take in.
It, in, in its build-out, it'll, it'll, it'll be built specifications, have characteristics, how similar or dissimilar to what's found elsewhere in the Highlands.
That's a great question. The, the roads in West Ridge are wider than many of the roads in the residential areas of Isquah Highlands. The commercial areas have slightly wider roads, but most of the residential areas were built with nine-foot travel lanes and six- or seven-foot parallel parking. So, this is ten-foot travel lanes, which is East Side Fire and Rescue's preference, and then seven-foot parking, which we have been using in the more recent years.
Okay. There's also some information about the slope of the western end of Ellis. Will it's, will, will it still be High Street in the West Highlands area where it is now? It, should, should, that's still, it's labeled High Street, right? I just want to make sure I'm calling it the right thing.
Are you talking about like, this area right here?
Yes.
I don't know exactly what it's called. I'm sure there's people here who could tell you.
They call that the, kind of, the west end.
Okay.
For this photo's purpose.
Sure.
And we have some data that, that's, that, do you know off the top of your head what it said, the slopes of that, those roads are? Because one of the, the common concerns expressed by the residents is, is ability to get in and out of, of the neighborhood during a snow event.
Right.
And slopes matter.
Right. So, the maximum allowed road grade in the city is twelve percent. It used to be fifteen percent, and it was reduced in recent years. When you look at the plat area, you can see that the existing end, this little piece of road, is about seven and a half percent. Ellis through here is about ten percent. Discovery Drive is fifteen percent. That certainly is the one that we've heard the most concerns about. The overall area, you can see that Isquah Highlands has many slopes that are about the same at nine percent, or even much steeper at fourteen and a half, and fifteen. So, all the streets comply with the city's limitations, and while we understand the preference to keep the grades lower, part of the challenge is that we live in a foothill community. That's part of why we have the views and topography that we love, and that is one of the challenges that we face, is trying to balance the grades with the existing topography.
Okay, so that section of Ellis that you have labeled at ten percent, now, I realize there could be some error, but I made multiple of my own measurements on that street today, and I couldn't get anything other than eight percent. Now, it could be that my inclinometer wasn't calibrated correctly. I tried to recalibrate it a couple times. I got eight percent. It would be of value if we could double-check that number.
Sure. I relied on the applicant's engineer, but I am happy to double-check it. Anything else?
As far as the uses, there were several mentioned. How, how common are those different uses in this area? So, there was the pea patch, the dog park, which I know there's, I know there's several dog parks in the Highlands.
That's a great question. So, overall, Polygon, as is typical with Isquah Highlands, is building some kind of recreational or open space with each of their projects. The closest pea patch is this one right here. As I understand it, and again, Sarah Hoey can probably speak to this better than I can, even though men, several of the apartment projects have built pea patches, I think some of them are managed by the IHCA, and if they are not taken by the residents, are then opened up to the larger community. So, I know that both of the Discovery Heights projects, Sunset Walk, and I know there's another one I'm spacing out, have pea patches, as well as the big community pea patches that is in the BPA corridor. And my impression is that they have a lot, they're very popular.
And that, that currently is a pea patch rate?
No, that's just, the land use permit was just approved for that, so it has not been constructed yet. In terms of dog parks, again, Discovery Heights, and both Discovery Heights have one. There's the big one on the east end of Isquah Highlands, and then the Isquah Terrace, which is part of Lakeside just north of the YWCA, also has both a large, large and a small dog park. But many of those, again, are located with projects and are probably open to residents, not necessarily the broader community. That's why I made the point that if the community prioritizes this, and it's clearly indicated when people are buying homes, then maybe that would be the decision of the community. On the other hand, it may be determined that that is just too close to homes, and just may not be a good choice.
In the proposed uses, are they open to, to the community, or are they, would they be for the residents of the development?
These would be open to the community.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay, thank you, Lucy. We're going to open it up for public comment on the, this agenda bill only, High Street conversion. Anybody here to talk on that topic? Sure?
Do you see it there, Mike? You're right, yeah. You're in the right place. Just hit the speaker.
My name is Mike Zaluski. I live in West Highlands Park, and I think I can actually keep it to five minutes this time. I'll try to blast through these. So, what I want to talk about here is, I'm still very amazed that we're still talking about the situation of handing over a public road to add to a private developer. I'm surprised this even is a consideration, and I don't believe this is in the best interest of the community. I don't believe there's any precedent for this, and I'm surprised that a park would have a higher priority over an actively-used public piece of infrastructure. Currently, High Street provides safe travel for all modes of transportation. For vehicle travel, you can travel on it at any time of the year, weather or light conditions, and the corridor would be of most use by everybody if we remained as-is. So, I believe the decision about this parcel should be made, should be made on the most use, not necessarily anything else. Safety, I, I think there's no two bits about it. I think it's always going to be a worse-than-safety situation. I don't think anything would be more safe than having cars to be allowed to go around West Ridge North. You're going to now have a hundred and ninety-three cars in a two-hour period, driving through a dense neighborhood now, that will be through traffic. High Street will allow that safe passage. About the grades, I'm not so concerned about the residents. I'm concerned about ambulances and fire engines needing to get in on a snowy day. They pick up their patient, and they slip and slide, and they can't get out. Better views, we have this in West Highlands Park right now. It's actually a better view, and not a whole lot of people flock there, like I would presume would happen with this proposed park. Here are some views of the proposed park. So, on the western end, you'll get to look at trees and a chain-link fence. In the middle, you can maybe see something, and in the eastern end, you get to look at that. Again, we need to question motives here. Why would a, a corporation propose this? You must question this. We need to be honest with ourselves. Is this really going to be used very much? Think, think what it's like around here, winter, dark, cold, and rain. Is this really worth eliminating a road? We wanted to get an idea of what your, what people seem to think. They think everybody's going to flock to this, but the park's on the right. The park on the bottom there was taken on a very nice Saturday, June afternoon, and there's barely anybody there. So, what is this trail? It's very short. You can maybe spend a couple minutes on it. That's great, and it doesn't really provide any unique amenities. I don't think it completes a trail connection. It connects a road and a sidewalk to a road and a sidewalk. If you really wanted to connect a, a trail connection, you would go all the way around the north of West Highlands Park and connect to our existing western trail. I'm worried about the slope. The grading right now doesn't seem to match the rendering, so I'm wondering about if the renderings are actually accurate. We, yeah, my question here is, why is it okay to build over a road? Maybe you should put this on their own property. Keep in mind, this is the same developer that housed over a nice path to the other side, and now we're proposing on putting a path over something else useful. So, what should we do? I don't think this decision needs to be made now. If we want to come back to it, great, but let's not do it now. There's too many unknowns. So, what should we do? I say, do nothing, keep High Street as-is, allow Polygon to build their neighborhood as they want. That's fine, totally fine with that, and I think everybody benefits here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Robert Swanson. I live at eight twenty-six Fourth Avenue up in Isquah Highlands, same neighborhood as Mike. So, I agree one hundred percent with Mike. It's, it's a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-a-year access to it. During the winter, nobody's going to be going to park and enjoying the beautiful flowers, whatever, because it's going to be raining, it's going to be snowing, it's going to be cold, there's, by the time people get off work, it's four o'clock, you know, and it's going dark already, and sun doesn't come up until eight o'clock. So, the amount of usage, true, some people might go to it during the summer, or early spring, or late, late, late summer, but this is all year-round. Now, because I, I drive there and I go to work, I, in the morning, we get on our Facebook page, "Hey, guys, I tried going up the little hill, can't do it, don't go there." So, I had to go around, and I barely, just barely made it up the, the High Street. I was going fine. The barely part is when I got to the stop sign. And at the stop sign, I couldn't keep going. I had to literally get out of my car, had one foot in while I'm pushing, just to get myself, and I think somebody might have stopped to help me get my car up there. And the, the grading is so small at that stop sign of the top of High Street. Well, the same thing's going to happen at that, the use, I appreciate so much going out and determining the grade on that, because I'm looking at the grades, and I go, "That is not a ten percent grade," you know, or whatever they're calling it. It, it may not be fifteen, but it's sure not ten percent. But we go up the top, and I can't re, I don't think there's a stop sign there, but if you go up to the top of that hill and you stop for any reason, or you, you don't get to the top, you're coming back down that hill on a, on a icy, stormy day. In essence, we'll be trapped in there. Now, I know other people have bad situations, but right now, this is a good situation. There's plenty, we, we can get out of there any way we want. Up High Street, we can get out there when we want to, during a snowy storm, a storm, ice storm. But if you cut that off, there will be days when we will be trapped for a couple of days in our new, our, our neighborhood. And they do not ice, sand that hill on the fifteen percent grade hill, and they surely don't get to High Street until however many days or hours, ten hours later. They don't do it first thing. They do the, the big hill going down, which they should. I'm not disagreeing about that. They should do the big Main Street first. So, they're not going to do our little teeny hill, and so, we're going to be trapped in there. There's just no doubt about it. I live it, I drive it. Every year, we get trapped, if, if that's there. So, he had a picture of, I don't know if you remember, where the orange fence was there with the white plastic on it. I showed a picture to the commission, and, because they were saying, "Well, we want, we're going to have a place where moms can push their strollers," right? So, this can be a wonderful place. And I said, "Well, we already have a place. They push..." They push strollers up and down that all the time. They walk up and down. I go, I can walk up there, go catch the bus to work. People ride their bikes up and down. There is no advantage, that has no advantage to the park." So, I stopped, and I took a picture of a man pushing his, his baby stroller up there. It was a little drizzly, a little gray. I took a picture, but in the picture was all the white there with the, the orange, whatever that fence stuff is. It looked ugly. That's because the developer cut down all the trees and bushes and put up the white stuff and the dirt, and then the orange thing, and the council said, after I sat down, they go, "Oh, do you remember the picture you put up there? Boy, that was such an ugly picture there. We want, they're going to build something really nice." But I never had a chance to reply to that, because you can't do that. But it was ugly, because the developer cut all the stuff down. But now, my point was, we have people pushing strollers already. So, it's going to be a very minute time. Now, the view, what he, last night, 4th of July, last night, I was out there at the exact location he was talking about. Guess what? I can see the lake, I can see fireworks from Bellevue coming over the hill. We could see the stuff from the Space Needle. We go there every single year for 10 years now. We lived up there for 10 years. And we saw five families, my family and four other families, and another family I invited from down here in the valley. So, really, three other families besides mine and my friend came there. And that was the most we've ever seen on a 4th of July with the best view in that area. People are not going to go there. You know what? You put that view that they're talking about, you can't really see the lake. It's maybe a small little portion of lake. The place we have is an incredible view. It's a beaut, it's the best view up there. No trees are in the way, there's no trees to cut down. It's just boom. People don't, it's not a destination place. It's a better view than the one that they're going to create. So, why spend all that money? Why do all that? The view is, you can check that one off. We got a better view already. People aren't going to be using it. We already have bikes and paths, and people can walk. It's better to use the cars going up there. Give them the use of the cars. It is a much better way to do it. I had one more point, and I can't remember what that last point was, but I'm sure it was a good one. So, anyway, it, I, I just, I, I think it's just practicality-wise, it is, it's not use. Oh, destination. First of all, I'm just going to let you go, no, you won't need parking. I would not even worry about extra parking there, because it's not going to be a destination place. I go to the parks all over the place, up in the Iskua Highlands. I go to the basketball park behind the fire station, and there's hardly anybody there. They got a swing set. Maybe one family's there, maybe, when I go see, go there. There's tons of people live right around there. I play basketball there. There's, there's trails people walk, but that's a long trail. Nobody's going to come to a three-block, a three-block walk. Just not going to happen. It's not going to be a destination. Now, I have happened, oh, this is the last point I want to say.
I can wrap it up.
Yeah, I gave a, I went and did a survey, you know, I did. So, I did some from our neighborhood. Nobody in our neighborhood wants it. You know, Mike and I, I haven't yet to run across one person, "Oh, yeah, that's a great idea, I love it." So, I went up to Starbucks that's above the hill, that none of our neighbors are at, and I sat there for an entire night. I got 33 signatures. Not one person supported it. No, I'll give a little asterisk. I was giving, I was trying my best to be honest and get both sides.
Let's wrap it up.
But nobody, nobody wants it. So, I'm hoping that they, I don't know how they're going to do it, but I'm really hoping that they give a good, honest way for us to vote for it. And I think you will be really surprised to see how many people up in the Iskua Highlands really want that. There you go.
Thank you. Next? Erica?
Hello, good evening. Sarah Hoy, Director for Iskua Highlands. I am really neutral on this. I am very concerned about the feedback that we're getting from the homeowners. I really like the idea of going out to the community and finding out what they want. Iskua Highlands has a responsibility to maintain these, these areas, however we decide to do them, whether we're putting in more street trees, or putting in a path or a trail on overlook or something like that. I do have some concerns about the liability of a skate park for the IHCA to take on. I would, that needs to have some more in-depth conversation. But, and I do want to clarify that Iskua Highlands Community Association has one dog park. The others are owned by private entities. But we do get people from all over the city that comes up and uses those, as well as the P-patch garden. And we do maintain the land for the P-patch garden, but the program itself is managed by Highlands Council with Christie Gerard, and we have a great turnout for that. So, just short and sweet, whatever you guys decide you want to do, you know, listen to the community, make sure that this is the best thing for them. I do want to say, lastly, that I do not think that the plat for this, for these homes being built should be held up based on the decision for High Street. So, I'm in full agreement that the plat should move forward for West Ridge North, single family, and then High Street can be worked out later after more feedback. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, my name is Brian Smith. I live in the West Highlands Park area. And just a couple things, you probably have already heard this, but I feel, again, if we're going to do something, we've got to take into account parking. I talked to Erica, who's our community kind of manager, and the first thing that came out of her mouth, her mouth was, "Parking. We just need to make sure we take into account for parking." I was, I'm off for the summer, so I'm fortunate enough to take in a lot of walking in the neighborhood, and I've gone to a number of parks, and a lot of the parks in the neighborhoods are very empty in the mornings and then the afternoons. I'm walking probably 25,000 steps a week, so, or a day. And I'm noticing quite a bit of the parks in the neighborhoods that are very empty. So, I think you saw some of the pictures I provided those, so just something to think about. Just take a peek. I think I like the idea of the survey of the community. I think the community will be able to voice their opinion on whether they need it or don't. I'm okay either way. I just want the community to do the best thing that's possible. Couple other things. I think the, the challenge I have is that the, the little trail will not connect to anything else. It'll connect to a street, which will then connect to, to a bunch of the shops, and it doesn't connect even to some of the, the hospital around the, you know, kind of the trail around the hospital and so forth. So, I see a do, I see a lot of the nurses and doctors walking around that way, but they'll cut through my neighborhood to get to the street and upward. So, I would really encourage you guys to think about that, that this little strip is not going to connect. They're going to connect through neighborhoods. So, it's just something that's kind of omitting. Couple other things. I'm also concerned about the grade, so we've seen some of the illustrations that the slopes, I, I just can't picture it in my head. It's the slopes of the, where the plastic lining is, is, you know, 25, maybe 30 feet. I'm just not visually seeing how that stacks up with the road and the trail. So, I would like a little bit more clarity on that, because one of the challenges we have in our space is the drainage, and just even our natural park that's in our neighborhood, it doesn't drain very well. Now, it does, because it's not raining, but when the winter comes and it's pouring, it just becomes a slop fest. So, it's just something to consider. Again, I don't understand the renderings versus the, what's actually going to be built. The renderings look really good, but I just don't see how it's actually going to map out based on what I'm seeing. The other thing is, as you go up Ellis, there are some cutouts that look like they're going to be spaces for parking. I thought that there is not going to be any parking that was going to be available on Ellis, but there's a couple, whatever it is, little bumpouts, that look like they're going to be available for parking, street parking, which, again, I would like not to have any parking on that main drag going out of Ellis. And then the other thing, you know, we talked about that Sixth Place, the street that's going to go through that neighborhood, tack into the other neighborhoods. My concern with that is that people are going to use that as a bypass. So, you get rid of High Street, now High Street just moves over one click, and that's going to be the High Street. And I'm really concerned about, because people are going to start using that, because if you build it, they're going to come. And instead of driving up through Ellis, they're going to go through that neighborhood and get down into our neighborhood. So, just something considered, because we see a lot of speeding, and I understand that there's that calming effect, but it, no one's going to take any, how do you take calming out of someone's foot on the right pedal? So, that's the challenge, and I'm afraid is, if you drive through that neighborhood on Sixth Place Street, that's going to become somewhat of a destination where people are going to potentially get harmed. And then, last but not least, I, I, I looked at the, the agreement, and so I'm going to read my notes, is there were some comments that were in there, where they were talking about taking out dirt and so forth, that that would be a disruption or benefit to the community. I don't understand that. That was actually in the, the proposal, so I didn't understand that as well. Couple other things. Yeah, and I, again, I think it's, it's something that I really encourage you guys to consider is, is getting the public feedback in our neighborhood, as well as surrounding areas. I do encourage you, if you're going to do this, certainly, I enjoy the P-patch. I have to drive all the way up there, and it's quite a ways, and then also the dog parks. So, those would be amenities. I'm not a big fan, and there is a cost to the IHC. So, I know in our neighborhood, there's a insurance cost, so those are things that you're going to have to consider. So, if you put something in like a skate park, the additional cost to the Homeowners Association. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next, Carl?
New place for me to be. Carl Lee, 1310 Brooklyn Walk in Iskua. I'm going to do two hats. First is a member of the UVDC Urban Village Development Commission, and then I'm also resident fairly close by. A few things that I wanted to bring up that we had at the UVDC meeting to sort of address and provide you guys direct feedback is, one, is maintaining the character envisioned in the development agreement. There are very few, or why we talked about the dropping of High Street, whatever that proper phrase would be, Lucy, help me out there, but a vacation of High Street for this potential park. And the idea was, is there are very few roads within all of Iskua Highlands that have essentially unimpeded flow in and out, Park Drive being one of the few exceptions. I'm the third-longest-tenured resident of Iskua Highlands, so arguably, every bit of development after I moved in has impacted me in some way. That's sort of been the spirit of this community. Things are built for the entire community, whether it's parks, which people enjoy those amenities, so this would provide that amenity. Roadways, we don't like looking at the backs of people's homes typically. Like I said, that Park Drive is one of the few places, I think, in Iskua Highlands where we have the view to the back. We've tried to maintain roads to the, to the fronts of people's homes. And just generally, the character, we provide, the gentleman just mentioned the bumpouts. We've lived with traffic calming devices. Ellis Street would provide a fairly straightforward access to Ninth Avenue, but beyond that, we're accustomed to narrow roads that calm traffic. I would opine that the people zooming through the neighborhoods would be you, the residents, it's on your responsibility to slow down a little bit and not zoom through other people's neighborhoods. That's my UVDC hat. Any questions for that? I don't know if you can ask questions or not, so, okay. My resident hat, I live in the Brownstones across the way, next to Discovery Drive, which I don't know, has a over 10% grade right there. I'm happy to say, when it snows, we're one of the first streets to get it done. I also used to live off of Katsura, another steep grade, one of the first streets to get done. So, Public Works Department, kudos to them. I run High Street probably three times a week. I search out, I run a lot of asphalt and concrete. I search parks. They're kind around the old knees and ankles and go through, so anytime we can add any additional park space, all those people who are pushing strollers up and down the street would probably like a park to go through better than that. So, I think, so, I'm not here to rebut things, I'm here to observe. I'd be in favor of that. Anytime we get a small park opportunity, I'm much in favor. I would point out the one next to Marshalls and Home Goods, which I thought, when we looked at it as UVDC, I thought it was a little silly. We walked through it every time. We sort of cut through on our way, because it's a great little pocket park. So, extra little parks are nice amenities that add to the broader impact of our community. Tried to keep it short with both hats. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Jeff?
My name is Jeff Walker. I live at 20116 Court, Northeast in Iskua Highlands, also the chairman of the Urban Village Development Commission. And because I was, am the second-longest resident in the Highlands, even Carl moving in has impacted me. But he's exactly right. He said a lot of the things that I wanted to say, but I will, I will reiterate some of them in my, in my own words. Wearing two hats, UVDC's hat as well as, or my UVDC hat as well as my resident hat, but, you know, we thought about this long and hard. I did ask the question, "Why are we talking about the conversion as part of the plat?" since I didn't believe it belonged as part of the plat, but we were told that it, it did, and so we took that, and that's fine. And we learned later that it probably should have been separated, and that's, I'm glad that it is, to be honest with you. But we thought about it long and hard, and I think we talked a lot about how we wanted to make sure that the community had input, that it definitely came back to the community, that it wasn't decided by the applicant. I had some concerns, as I always do, that an applicant, even if their intentions are good, that they may just do what's best for them, or for their budget, or for their timing or whatever, not necessarily nefariously, but just because it's easier sometimes. And I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case, and, so, I like that it's being separated out. I do have a question that can't be answered right now, I'm sure, but if this doesn't get converted, then what does that do to the plat in terms of the backs of houses on that street? And I'm, I'm not sure where that goes. But it's definitely not within the character of the community that we have been working on. So, in terms of the feedback, I think we definitely need feedback from residents from the broader Iskua Highlands community, not just West Highlands Park, because, as Carl 's mentioned, people, you know, I think definitely you can walk, you can ride, you can stroll, you can do whatever you want on those roads. You can do that on any road in the Highlands or anywhere in the community. And I think it, people would prefer to have something a little bit nicer to stop and sit and enjoy, maybe softer on their, their wheels or their feet, or whatever they're, they're on. There was some talk about how parks aren't being used. I would have to disagree with that. I've lived and worked, not lived, worked, I've lived and been around Ashland Park for 20 years. I've been in the Highlands since October of 1998, so I'm coming up on 20 years. And Ashland Park has been in the center of our family and community since then, and while you might drive by it and not see anybody there, it's absolutely used, and if it weren't there, it would be a very, very different community, very different neighborhood. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't for one second say that any park in the community could be done away with and be okay. I personally don't believe, and I also, as a UVDC member, don't believe that any resident or neighborhood is either immune to additional development near them, or is entitled to an unimpeded bypass to their neighborhood. Every single neighborhood in the Highlands, I think without exception, has some sort of, you know, access challenge. It could be long distances, it could be a steep road, it could be communities being built in between them, whatever it is. So, while I understand how important and how nice it is to not have something impeding you, it's not a right or an entitlement that everyone is, that should be in front of everyone. If that were the case, then, you know, I want my streets back. I agree with Carl, and there are others, there are streets that are steep, and I don't know anybody that's been trapped for days in their neighborhood, because Public Works does a very good job of clearing the streets. Yes, it can be challenging, but we all deal with it. I live off Katsura today. I've had to go up and down Park Drive, Discovery Drive. None of us are immune from it, and not saying that we should cause more stress or harm or, or trouble for other people, but again, it goes back to the entitlement thing. If this is for the greater good of the community, which I believe that the conversion is, then unfortunately, some people might have to take a little bit of a backseat to the, to what I consider the greater good. Let's see here. I think I covered most of this stuff. I do really believe that the amenities, that if the conversion happens, that the amenities in the park should be driven from the ground up in terms of from the community, not from either the city or the developer, but I do believe that they, that at the, at the very least, if this is city land and community land, that the city should have input into it, but I really believe it's the residents and not just West Highlands Park, but everybody in the community have an opportunity to weigh in on that, because while I don't live close close in terms of spitting distance from that park, I would 100% use it as I do pretty much every other single park in the community, which is not close to me today. So, I think I've covered everything. Let me just take a quick look. Oh, and, and in terms of the amenities, I actually think it needs to start from a blank slate or a plethora of options, not just the three or four that's been thrown out there, which I think was, was more of a convenience and timing thing. Certainly not dissing the ideas of those, those amenities, but I really believe we could start from the ground up and actually be a little broader with those. All right, I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Next? David? David?
This is pretty complicated, for sure. And the details are immense and really gotta be figured out to make this work for the long term if you end up doing it. We've talked all about the views out, but there's also the views in from the valley floor, about are we gonna just see, because people living in those houses are gonna have an interest in not having those trees blocking their view of the whatever. So how we manage the trees, the landscaping in there, and then the cost of that landscaping, and how it's really done right to start with, and is affordable for the residents of the whole Highlands to have to pay for that landscaping's maintenance, is potentially a significant problem if it's not done really well. So there's gonna be a lot of details to work out, and to make sure that if this is done, it's done so it works for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Bunny?
So I'm echoing Jeff.
Is that writing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, they're celebrating over there, I got distracted. The connections to all of the other small trails in the area, I would actually like to see as a condition, if you agree to put this through, because you do have the trail that goes in front of West Highlands Park, that's not connected, and then you could link it all the way around the hospital and make an awesome loop, but at this point in time, there isn't even a head nod to trying, and I think you need to try to make an elegant connection for the trail pathway. Now, West Highlands Park people need to stop cutting down the trees on the land below them, so that they can keep their view, because that's Issaquah Highlands Homeowners Association land, and they keep planting and the trees keep going away. This is gonna be basically the same situation. So we do need to ensure that we keep the trees where we want the trees, peekaboo views are good, just because anything they can see out, then we can see them. Now, about getting stuck in your house, I'm on Squawk Mountain. I have been stuck many a time. I put on my boots and I walk, and I consider them some of the best days that I can remember in this town. It is super awesome not to be able to use your car. It really is, those are some of the bonus days. Everybody else has said everything, so I'm not gonna, oh, as everyone else has been saying, one more thing. I think when people are envisioning this area, their brains are thinking it's gonna be blank forever, but it's gonna be developed, and it's likely to be developed in a very dense way, and we're gonna need every park space we can get as all those people move in. So to make this be a road, when you know people are gonna be living there, would really be a travesty. You have an amazing opportunity.
Thank you. Next. Sure.
Nick Avdilnor, Polygon Northwest. New faces, familiar faces. A lot has been said, I think I just wanna reiterate what we shared with you at the last meeting, which was transparency. We put this together in coordination with staff. This was not purely something that we did in a vacuum. It's something we've done in the past successfully in other municipalities. I think one of the smartest things the administration did, and Jeff noted it, was the separation of the ABs. One may take more time than the other, and that's something that we respect, and it's something that we can take the time to do, separate from the plat. The idea that it benefits solely us is not the case. It's something that we found unique. Everyone's gonna have an opinion on what they would like to see there and when they would like to see it, and that is gonna be the biggest challenge, but one that'll be worth paying off, and one that should be a public process and that we fully support. So I just wanna leave that with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I see almost everybody here from the public has had a chance to talk. Okay, I'm gonna call one more time. Right. Thank you all for coming and commenting. Do we have questions? Yeah, might do too. Go ahead, Paul.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Lucy, today, High Street is a public right-of-way, and should this be converted, would it remain land in the public domain?
Yes.
Nothing's being given.
No.
All right, thank you. And the question, a couple comments came up, and I think you addressed it last time we met here, about the connection, and I think you can almost see in the bottom-left corner of that map.
Right.
That there, that linear, that right there, could you, my recollection is that that will, that's actually part of the integrated trail network.
Right, so.
Will be connected to that.
Where the High Street conversion is proposed to end, the trail would move into Track E, cross Ellis, and is proposed behind what is called Block Four. The land use permit is in for Block Four currently, and it includes this trail.
I would also, let's see if I can find this. So you can see that if this conversion happened, it would be a separate trail system from Discovery all the way up to High. South of here, this is on-road, then there is a separate trail, the one that goes around the hospital, and that can also go down to the valley floor. There is a small sort of forest path around the outside of this project. I did not show that because it's not really bicycle-rated. It's more of a pedestrian path, but that is a separate trail system that is being constructed as part of West Ridge South as well.
All right, thank you.
The trail that goes in front of West Highlands Park, is there a way to connect?
Oh, down here. You know, there might be behind, this is being built as part of West Ridge South. It is a road, but there is a fairly sizable area behind the sidewalk. I have not, I don't know exactly what the dimensions or grades are, but it might be possible to build that until you get into the plat, and then you're on a very quiet neighborhood street to then connect over here.
I'm talking about where the views are.
Oh.
Behind.
So are you talking about heading down to the valley floor? So Lakeside, it is shown that there is a trail from Neighborhood F, which is right here, down to the valley floor, about where Locust Street.
I'm just talking about, is there planned connection from?
Oh, West Highlands Park's trail to.
High Street. Trail, if there is one.
So their trail right now connects from the pond, kind of along this edge, and it does not have any, I mean, there's the green space, which you could use, but there is no multi-use trail that connects east-west. It's mostly a north-south trail.
So when you're saying trails or connections, are you including sidewalks?
So I was not, not because I wouldn't expect most bicycles to be on the sidewalk, although certainly family, some recreational cyclists choose to use that, and you're right, there are sidewalks on all of these streets that someone could choose to use, or they could take the travel lane.
Well, I was, I guess my question is about, I don't know that every connection that we have is gonna be bicycle-friendly, obviously, but to the extent that you could connect trails, sidewalks, pathways, whatever you wanna call them, even though they're not accessible for every type of use, would still be a benefit.
And I think part of, so Lucy, if I can help, maybe.
Thank you.
So I think part of what we would look to do with Lakeside, when Lakeside makes that connection down to the valley floor, we would try and tee in that West Highlands Park westernmost trail. So it would be an opportunity to add that into a more complete trail network when we make that connection.
So you can sort of see the trail along this edge, that then connects to the trail around the pond, and there are sidewalks along all of these streets, as well as the sort of walkway system through the greenway. So there are many different ways to head east-west from that trail.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. One of the questions or comments we heard is that we could take more time with this than we do with the plat, for example. So can you just give a brief explanation about how these two are connected, and why that is or is not possible, or a good idea, or a bad idea?
So, right, the, sorry. Originally, the two were submitted as a single proposal. As we came out of the plat, a quasi-judicial process would have restricted public conversation in front of the council, who are the decision-makers. It was recognized that High Street was actually outside of the piece of property that was being platted, and therefore, we were able to segregate the two. In terms of them going at different timing, if we are looking, well, there are several different proposals, I don't, I need to be careful, because then we begin to get into the plat. If High Street was not converted, there are some actions that we would have to take. I don't think that they would require reconfiguring the plat, but there would probably need to be some acknowledgement that if High Street isn't converted, certain actions would be necessary on the backs of the lots to bring it into compliance with the guidelines that are in the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement.
And so would one of the options be, if the plat were to move forward, just separate tonight, but there was additional information that the committee wanted, is that a problem at all?
I think as long as we, as long as we add some kind of condition, which we could certainly craft, that acknowledges that the backside of those, if High Street is not converted, an action is necessary on the backside of those lots. I think that is the primary thing that would need to happen. So it leaves a little bit of uncertainty, but it does not require a complete reconfiguring of the plat likely.
There were some, there was some discussion about the grade again. Can you go over again the grade of the Sixth Street, which is sort of, which is parallel to High Street, and if there's a difference in the grade?
So, Street A is relatively flat. You can see it's 5% here, 2 and 1 and 1/2%, 2%, you probably won't even notice, that's the cross-slope on an ADA-compliant route. So that tells you that it's gonna be perceived as relatively flat and is mostly for drainage.
Sorry, Street A, is that the street that is the extension of what, Sixth?
Yes. Because we are, High Street is low, and overall, the grade is working its way higher up towards Ninth Avenue, that you are seeing that, again, Ellis is also outside of the plat, has more topography. Each of those roads is making its way back up the hill. The picture that was shown with the street and the orange construction fencing and the white plastic is not, I think I have a set of the drawings here. So you can see, I'm just gonna choose to use this one. So you can see that it's relatively flat. This would be where High Street is currently located. It's relatively flat, coming off a lot, and then there is a big step up in the middle of the house, so it would have, it would step up the hill. And you get a sense of that here. The vertical and horizontal scales on this drawing are not the same, so it looks much steeper than it actually is, but this gives a sense that, you know, as you start in one part, you're stepping your way up. The specific grading would be related to the plat, but it gives you a sense of what the relationship is. And in the, some of the plat, some of the imagery that's been used, you can see what the approximate grades are, and then there is a low wall that would make that grade transition to a backyard to kind of create a sense of separation.
So for the, for the conversion, if you were to drive on High Street now versus if you had to take a different way to get that same, go that same route, what, I'm still having trouble seeing what's the difference in the maximum grade you would have to go for a car, and would that matter as far as the concerns about snow, no access?
Well, I talked, I talked to Kurt Seaman about that for a while. I think, well, I don't want to ignore the concerns that are voiced. I think there are a couple of things to be pointed out. 12% is allowed. They have no slopes that are anywhere near, proposing no slopes anywhere near 12%. And I think Kurt's concern is that if people do not feel safe driving, they should not be driving, and that is different from person to person and road to road, and it depends on whether there's ice, or snow, or a combination. And so I don't have the specific grades of High Street, because that was not part of the evaluation, but all the roads are less than the allowable grades that the city requires in terms of its standards. I guess that's the short answer.
I have two other questions. There is a question about parking along the, so my understanding was there's parking on all of the cross-streets.
Right.
Okay, including Ellis.
Right, and that was a discussion point with the UVDC, and one of the things that we, I went back to look at the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, and how different kinds of streets are defined. The higher-volume, higher-speed roads are the ones without parking. The neighborhood streets that are intended for lower speeds have on-street parking. On-street parking helps slow traffic down and will make it more consistent with the character and the kind of driving that the city would want in this neighborhood.
Okay, and then my last question is, there's, it seems to me that this is a fairly small park area, but it has the potential to connect to another, a bunch of other areas. But those connections are also time-sensitive, and they involve other agreements potentially, and so it seems like there's a lot of moving pieces to this, and I'm wondering, taking into account that this piece can be done separately from the plat, which we're not talking about, how much could we work on these other connections? Because it seems like if it were to connect in some sort of loop, or potentially, the utility of this area could be dependent in a large part to making those other trail connections, so I'm wondering how. So I'm wondering how, what's the timing on having some of those other pieces come into focus more?
So it depends on which pieces you're thinking of. So this Block Four, within West Ridge, Block Four and this area of the plat are the last two pieces. The land-use permits have been approved for all the other parts of West Ridge. In terms of some of those, this is organized from last time, and so I'm sorry, I have to keep jumping around. In terms of some of the other pieces that you're identifying, you know, for instance, if there was a trail connection here, their plat has been approved. That land is going to be public right-of-way, so at some point, the city could choose to build a trail in that location, or understand the necessary design. I don't think we are in a position to make that a requirement of the developer, for instance.
I guess, to the extent possible, could you explain, so there was also discussion about the, the sort of loop around the hospital, which I think visually, you know, if you could connect a lot of these areas, that would be great.
Absolutely.
But I don't get a sense for how, how realistic that is, given some parts are built out, some parts are not built out, some parts are in the process of being built out, and there's a bunch of different moving pieces.
Sure. So I think Discovery Drive is still uncertain. That's being built out as part of the shelter property. The south side is complete. It's the north side we're not certain about. This trail is complete, and this connection is complete. There, actually, one piece that I mentioned last time, but I forgot to mention this time, is that this kind of large block in the middle of Swedish will be further broken down. It's a requirement of their development agreement, that there either be roads or some kind of trail system that further subdivides that block. And until we get into a master planning process with them, we don't know exactly how that will go, but it is a requirement of the development agreement. The shelter property plat is in review right now. As I mentioned, the rest of West Ridge is gone through most of its land-use permits. So it, you know, a lot of things are already set, and we're, we're attempting to continue to connect those or extend them so that we have as much continuity as possible. I think that the idea of providing a trail behind the road would be, one that would definitely be worth exploring. I'm not sure whether the other pieces, how much we can transform those.
So I think we need to just add a little bit of finer-grain detail on the tethering between these two things, because even though I think programming, if, if the council wanted to repurpose High Street, and we wanted to have an opportunity to go out to the public for what that programming wants to look like, you know, whether it's Dog Park or Jungle Gym, that can, that's fine. That, that has absolutely no bearing on the plat. If, if on the other hand, the council has a certain number of things that have to happen for you to want to repurpose High Street, like, for example, it wants to have guaranteed views, that was brought up tonight, if it needs to be connected to a more regional trail system. If there are certain things that have to happen, then that's good to unpack tonight to understand whether we can actually deliver on that, because we're going to have to, if we're going to put an extra condition on the plat that says, if this goes this way, then this happens, and if it goes this way, then that happens, we need to, we need to understand that, I guess. And so as you guys continue to deliberate on High Street and what to do with High Street, even though we've said sequentially these things can be pulled apart, they're still tethered together in a way. And that tethers fairly, it's longer than it was when it went through UVDC, but it's still not infinitesimally long. There needs to be understanding of where we're going with High Street to know whether we add additional conditions to the plat or not. So I just want to be clear, sorry.
Other questions? So maybe I should start with one question to my fellow committee members, and that is, do either one of you, are either one of you interested in having this come back? So Keith mentioned guaranteed views. So, well, you talked about that being very important to you, and not that it's, I'm not saying it's not to us, I'm just, you brought it up, and so is there an interest in knowing how guaranteed that is before you were to make a decision on how you feel about a recommendation?
I'm pretty confident. I'm pretty confident now, but that next degree of confidence, I am interested in that. I'm not sure that it warrants another meeting.
Okay.
Because that is, I'm somewhat familiar with there being covenants on adjacent property and what that, how that encumbers that other property owner, and what they must allow for retaining a views. It's actually not that difficult, I mean, conceptually. So, and, and I've heard the piece, it sounds to me like the pieces are in place, but Stacy did point out something. It's one thing about having an agreement, but there are going to be changes coming, and we need to make sure that those are, are captured and not lost and not undone. So, so it is, to me, to have a park, and there's, there's many aspects of this, but the, the, my interest and willingness to support the conversion goes down dramatically if there aren't going to be views. It's just not as valuable of a park. It's still valuable, but it's not as valuable. So, so that's a long way of saying, I do want to have that vetted. I'm not sure it takes another meeting, but I'm open. I'm don't, I don't feel a sense of urgency timewise, but I understand the tethering at the same time.
Okay. Becky?
I, I think as far as if it warrants another meeting, I'll defer to the regular members of the council, of the committee. But from, from my perspective, I would also be willing to go forward with the recommendation based on the information that we have.
Okay. Anybody itching to start with their comments? Go ahead.
Okay. I think that one of the, for me, I am not a resident of the Highlands, but I'm a resident of Squawk Mountain. And for me, one of the really great things about the Highlands is that there are so many parks. And I think that actually, those parks not being filled with, with families and people all the time is probably a reflection of the fact that there are frequent parks, there are many options for, for people. And, and that's something that I think is really, a really great thing about the Highlands. There aren't, there are a lot of smaller parks, and they seem to be used, and they fit the need of the community because there's a lot of dense housing, and then there's a lot of scattered parks. So I think for that reason, it would be, it would be beneficial. I also think that having the street, I'm trying to separate the two things, but having the street be there and, and have no intersections, it seems to me like if you have the views and you have people trying to go with strollers, and then you also have this long street with no intersections, it would be much more of a, for me, for that particular use, it seems like it would be a safer for people with strollers and people walking along there if it wasn't vehicular use. It becomes more pedestrian-friendly if it's blocked off in that way. And the other thing is, I think it is a little bit challenging for me to imagine what else this connects to, but there seem to be a lot of options, and there seems like there are ways that it could connect to a bigger trail system, which would be, which would be beneficial. It sort of connects in an interesting way, and I think the views would be spectacular there, it seems. And also, there's potential for education component, if you had educational signage up there, and they have that discovery path, but maybe you could also have something about the views and what you're looking at, and interpretive signage. And I think it has, it has a lot of potential, and I think it has increased potential with the amenities if it does not allow vehicles. And then as far as the, the safety concerns, so I live on Squawk Mountain, there's very steep slopes up there. I think that part of that concern is, has to do more with the going up there and sanding, and it, I, so some of my questions were about the grade having to do with that, but it seems to me like that could potentially be addressed with the, with the grade and also with sanding of those streets. My thoughts.
Want to go, or you want me to go?
I'll go, no problem.
Sure.
Okay. I, I, many residents have spoken up, and multiple times, and I'm very grateful for the effort that has gone into that. And I seriously have considered and contemplated and tried to, tried my best to understand and ingest and say, okay, what's, what's really going on here? And do I, do I, do I agree? Do I understand the perspective? Do I agree with it? Do I have a different thought? And it kind of boiled down to, I, I asked myself quite a bit the question about convenience versus inconvenience, of the having a street that's basically, you know, what High Street means now versus maybe not having High Street. I considered the question about safety, that's been brought up quite a bit. And I'm going to say something about all of these. And then I, and I considered quite a bit the, the aspect of ingress and egress during the snow event. And, and, and those are the, those occupied my thinking the most. I look at a grid like that, I also live on Squawk Mountain, boy, we would kill to have that many opportunities that exist here. And, and part of my visual, what I'm seeing here too, is, we're talking about the north edge of all of this, but there are those diagonally kind of running northwest to southeast connections as well through the neighborhood. And I know that there will be many families of, and residents living what's in that undeveloped area right now. It will, this will, should this be a park, this would be very accessible, whether it's got a bike trail connection to another park, trail or not, that's not, I don't, I cycle around there all the time anyway. And, and, you know, I think just that, it's having pedestrian, and that can be a sidewalk to get there, to me, is the more important thing, and I think there would be quite a bit. So I, the, I like the idea of, of, of parks. They, parks can be quirky. They can have individual identities. They can be somewhat unique because of their setting and what they have to offer. There's actually quite a few parks up in the Highlands that offer views. They're from different perspectives, they're stepped up the side. One of the best ones is about to go away because the final house is going to be built up high. But where there, where there's actually a park with a, with a, you know, that provides a view, there, there are quite a few options, and I think that's one of the real benefits. We, so many people are here because of the environment and the setting, and when we have an opportunity to create yet another way for people to engage in and to enjoy something like a view that they may not have otherwise, I'm, I'm going to be biased toward, how do we make this happen? And, and, and so, so that's kind of my bias would be for a park. The point was raised about whether or not, and this was another aspect too, whether I'm going to be giving something away. And that was, that's why I asked my question earlier. That's very critical to me, that, about the give and the get here. This is public space today, and it will remain a public space. And so there's, there's nothing in terms of land that will be given away. And I think that, and so the public has access to it now, the public would have access should it be a park. That's very important to me. And, and so once, and that's a technicality, and that's easy to understand, but the others that are a little bit more difficult, so convenience. And I think we heard some pretty good testimony. I was concerned a month ago when I brought it up, and I've been thinking a lot about, what does Ellis Drive mean? Ellis Drive means a pretty good option in my mind. And the question, and I think that's, so in terms of convenience, Ellis Drive will remain a really nice, convenient option, as well as whatever Street A turns out to be. You'll have, there will be, there would be another option as well. But when I think about convenience, I do think that Ellis Drive is viable. But of course, then you think about the safety question. And I tell you, a street with no parking and almost no non-motorized users today certainly would, there would experience fewer incidents. The point was made earlier this evening about how, you know, to, to convert to a park and make people use Ellis, it would be worse than, than Highlands, High Street is today. Yes, because that's, that's true. But history is a guide. The, and that's why I asked the question about the character of what this street would be in terms of its width and whether there's parking and all of that. History is our guide. You know, the what Ellis Drive is envisioned to be used properly, then it's a safe avenue as well. And, and I think some of the other testimony about, we do things for the greater neighborhood as well, I think are viable as well. So, so from a convenience perspective, my sense is that Ellis Drive is a really good alternative. Yes, retaining Highlands would, would have fewer incidents, High Street would have fewer incidents, but Ellis is also a safe alternative. And so that's how I rationalize those. And then the last one I asked about, of course, had to do with the slope, had to do with, you know, getting in and out. I think those numbers are important. Last December 24th, last year, we had a pretty significant event here in Iskua. Matter of fact, it was more significant on Squawk Mountain than it was between every point between here and Ellensburg. I drove over the pass, I came down I-90, there was some snow, and I got to Squawk Mountain, and it was unbelievable was the carnage that was happening on, on, on there. And every one of those locations where there were cars sideways or blocked, I went and measured them, they were all at 12% or above. I actually, so I have my, you can get an inclinometer application for your smartphone. I went out there, I want to go, I want to go see what's going on from that perspective. So where was all of those incidents happened? So there, that and that domain. That's why, why I went over there, and I, and I'm sensitive to this idea, my gosh, might we get stuck down here. You know, I think it's around 8%, but maybe my numbers are wrong, maybe it could be 10%. I think that, and so I, so that's kind of, I could understand, I don't want to create some hardship. I don't want to minimize what a potential hardship would be. And in my mind, I'm leaning toward that this for, and I'm going to use that same phrase that was used at, at UVDC, for the greater good, this hardship doesn't, it's not breaking through and say, no, be against this yet. So, so that's a long way of saying that for those reasons, a view, I want to make sure that there's a view, because if there's not a view, it's not quite as compelling. But for those reasons, I am on the side of supporting this to a conversion, to be a park.
Thank you. So I do live in the Highlands, and I can tell you that the parks are well-used, I just want to echo that. I actually live across the street from two parks. One is Highlands Park, and one is a City Park. And I know they're well-used because people are parked all the way down the street in front of my house, going to the park, which is just fine with me, because it's awesome that we have so many parks and that they are so well-used. And I mean, as far as supporting converting this, keeping it as a public, public land, but converting it, I can just say, summing it up, more parks, more better. I, I just, I think we do have a fantastic opportunity. I'm, I'm not, I have had similar, you know, tried to listen to residents and listen to their concerns. I frankly am not too persuaded by concerns about getting stuck on the slope or having a more convenient access. You know, I have to go pretty far into the Highlands before I get to my place and spend a lot of that time dodging parked cars and dodging other cars and being very, very careful because the streets are well-used by people, and you have to be really, really careful. But that's what our community is, it's a dense community, that's what we expected. We did expect it was going to be built up densely around us, and I think that what's going up there, some of it's, you know, being converted to housing when it wasn't expected to be housing. But the, what's being built there is more or less consistent with the Highlands, and I think having another park in that area would be a great amenity. I do have some concerns. The concerns that I have are, I do concur with the comment about drainage. One of the parks that I live across the street from, the water table is so high that a lot of the year, even sometimes in the middle of summer, you're wading through the water because... because it's, doesn't drain well and the water table is really high. So I would want to make sure that we take a careful look at that so we don't end up with a long, flat mud puddle for much of the year because that wouldn't be used then. I'm also concerned about the, I'm going to paraphrase, so this isn't what you said, what it sounded to me initially like sort of a very narrow outreach about what that park space would be in terms of use, whose interest would be represented. I think it needs to be much broader community input, even though I know that it would probably mostly benefit the people who are within a short distance of it. It still should be thought of as a community benefit and therefore take the input from the, from the community. I think also we need to work really closely with the IHCA, as Sarah mentioned, because if we want them to maintain it, then we need to, we need to work with them and not just try to say this is how it's going to be and then you're going to maintain it because then they might say no. Views, I do think the views are important. I, I don't know that I would place it, I don't know that, I don't know that I have the same exact concern that Paul does about it being so much more important that we have views. I think we have an excellent opportunity there. I don't know that we ever thought we would have views, views there. We're, we've been lucky, I guess, in one sense, all these years to have the view because we haven't had any development there. It's, it's just been, just really, really beautiful. So the, the, the opportunity we have to preserve a view there is, is really great. Let me see if I have anything else. The connections, I want to do a little bit more thinking about the connections and some other, I'm not, need to think about it. Idea that we would have this made for by the developer is great. I'm supportive.
Made me think of one other thing, which is in public comment, there was the comment that, about it, the uses being much more broadly, looking for feedback on a much more broad swath of potential uses. And when I was looking at this, I saw the, the, there's a mommy and me swing proposal and then also the, the adult exercise equipment idea and then the views. And so it was sort of applying across all ages and that looked good to me. But I think there are so many potential other things and it would be great to get feedback and come back with a bunch of other options as well because I think there's potential for a lot of creative uses.
Thank you for that comment because I had a similar, I don't remember who said it. Might have been Jeff. I too would think that the, we might want to start with a blank slate about what the uses are so that we're not influencing, so people aren't thinking, well, do I want to support this or not? We, I think, I mean, I see places where the adult equipment is, I almost never see people on it, but I don't know, maybe it's greatly used at a time when I'm at work. So anyway, I, I think it would be valuable to start with a blank slate for creativity purposes.
Plus one.
Okay. Said plus one.
Oh, thank you.
He agrees. Okay, so I guess the committee would make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed High Street conversion?
I, I.
We don't need a second.
Okay.
Okay. Are we all in favor?
I, yes.
Okay. Yes. What date do you have that on?
I think if I'm very busy tomorrow morning, it could be July 16th.
July 16th? Okay. Sure. Okay.
And actually, that's what the agenda bill says, that it would be back on.
Just have the memos. Sorry.
To be clear though, that would, there would be, that would not be outreach between then and now.
No. Next item on the agenda is Agenda Bill 7480, West Ridge North Preliminary Platte. This is quasi-judicial and just to remind everybody, in case you're here for this, there won't be any public comment after this because it's a closed record. But you're welcome to stay.
So because it is quasi-judicial, I'm going to go through the question and answer part we all love. Quasi-judicial means that we treat this as a court and the proceedings have to both be, be fair and appear fair. That involves both procedural due process and substantive due process. I'm not even going to go into what those are because we've talked about them before. Please read the questions on the screen and I'll ask for your responses. How many reply note to all the answers? Okay. And then the second part has to do with ex parte conversations, which are, all parts of this have to be on the record during a public meeting. And so the question is, have you had any ex parte communications outside of the public meeting?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So tonight, again, we're responding to the questions that you identified in June. We've already talked about all the rest of that. So first one was what was Plan B if High Street proposal is not recommended at this time? You have chosen to recommend High Street conversion, which would allow Alternative One to move forward, which is the platte as proposed. The other option was keeping the platte as it was, but not converting High Street. And if that was selected, we would need to address some things like the backs of houses, but it wouldn't necessarily blow up the platte. The third alternative, which would have kept High Street as it is, but had houses face High Street, no one liked that. It would have put front doors facing High Street, but it would have also put driveways facing High Street. And then there would have needed to be another street likely approximately where this dash line is, where the eastern homes would face that. It would result in not a very strong community and High Street not operating as it does today. So everyone considered that kind of the worst of both proposals. So at this point, one and two are the two on the table and it seems like we may be moving forward to one if you recommend approval. Park Drive Extension, I think we made a kind of, or we, by we, I mean I, made an error by calling it a vunnerf. In reality, it has continued to evolve through time. It started as a trail connection. The extension of Park Drive was shown as a trail in the proposal. In looking at the platte, we recognized the grades were not such that their connection wasn't possible. So we had recommended a vunnerf, partly because we thought it was extremely important that the difference between the non-residential shelter project and the residential platte have very different characters to signal to drivers that they were in a different neighborhood. However, as the UVDC reviewed it, they felt very strongly that the travel lanes and pedestrian facilities needed to be separate. And so Condition 19 was edited to require that. It has not specified, is it a street or is it what we call like a character street, which is what's being built in a lot of other parts of West Ridge, which is a single service with bollards or something that segregate the pedestrian facilities from the travel lanes? That's something that we would work out during the site work permit process. So mostly, this is just to clarify that we aren't talking about a vunnerf anymore.
And we're talking about a street.
Well, okay. I, I, a character street, I guess, has the word street in it, so I should just say yes.
But then, but, and this is what I think is the conclusion or summary that we got to at last, last month, right?
Right. I mean, I think the most important thing is that we have travel lanes that are separate from pedestrian facilities. And whatever we call it, that's, I think, the essential characteristic of, of whatever facility we're going to build.
Okay, that's a, that summarizes the conversation.
Recreation facilities, to speak to Councilmember Hunt's questions. The platte had two tracks, A at the north and E at the south. The main reason I am showing this, it does partly show the facilities that are shown, but there were different square footages that showed up in many different slides last time. And so I wanted to go back and really look. And these are the square footages that were shown on the drawing. So those are the sizes that are in the platte. And I don't know if you have additional questions.
Tract, Tract A is the one at the top of this drawing?
Yes.
So that's very small.
Yes.
Okay. And that's a, a park?
Well, it's a recreation facility. I, here's, here's the thing I would say is both of these tracks, neither of them were accepted as shown. And there are two reasons for that. One, again, remember this is a platte, so this is a concept. Once we set the parcel size, we go back and we work with the IHCA, the applicant, and the development agreement to finalize this. We felt that the, there were, there was a condition, number 32, that described some of the changes that we thought were necessary to these areas to really serve multiple ages, different types of users, and to really be a beneficial element of the platte. But that typically happens through the administrative site development permit following the platte.
Okay, so they were not accepted as shown?
Well, partly, partly because we wanted to see more development and more meaningful spaces. And partly because since the IHCA is going to own and manage them, not, yes, own and manage them, they needed to have a seat at the table to ensure that these were the right kinds of facilities that they were willing to accept.
So Vicki, is your issue about the content or the size? Is 2,500 square feet, it's pretty small. And I think you started there. So, so maybe Lucy needs to spend a little bit of time talking about the required amount of open space for platte because that is a good starting for a conversation about what we're getting here versus what is required as part of the development agreement. Because that's a good, that's a good place to start this conversation, right?
Sure.
Right. And I, I think too, so part of why I'm asking the question is because this was about, this is the recreational areas. And so I'm asking about the reasoning behind having a very small recreational area at one end of this, many houses.
Well, so a couple of things I would say. One is remember, this was in the context of many other facilities that they were also proposing in High Street. So they were not proposing that this stand alone, although if the High Street conversion was rejected, it would. Second, the development agreement does not have specific requirements. What we have done over the years is look at the sizes of other facilities. That, the one thing that was in the platte, this was the information that was provided during the platte discussion. These are two other projects that were, that are polygon projects for comparison. When you look beyond the 15,000 and change square feet that are in those two tracks and you look at the recreational elements that are included along High Street, that's where the number, the 37, 596 comes from. Overall, this area is very consistent with the other neighborhoods in Iskua Highlands in providing a similar amount. But there is no specific number that we say you have to provide X square feet per unit.
What is skaters lane?
I think that is the skateboard area that seems unlikely to survive this process.
Interesting.
West Ridge South, 72 single-family homes, that's, so that 31,000, there, there, how many different spaces is that? Is that just the one? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yes, that is the one on top of their stormwater vault.
Okay, okay. So that, that's, that's 31. And so what, okay. I was just up there looking at it, just to get a sense of size and scale. So that's why.
Mm-hmm. In Forest Ridge though, it's in two different spaces. There's one sort of extended diamond shape and, and then a smaller kind of one that's tucked away on the side. So in some cases, there's multiples, in some case, there's one.
So the purpose of the slide is to compare areas, it's not to say that they're going to be swapping.
Right. So there, I think there are two pieces that we can say. One is it just gives us a sense of, is this consistent with other areas? Because we don't really have a metric that they are required to meet. I think the other piece though, is the slide that we, you keep seeing, which shows that each of these areas, the South Town Home Project, the North Town Home Project, and then the High Street conversion, all have fairly sizable areas that they are providing, which are not exclusive to that neighborhood and will provide a wide variety of spaces for people to seek out as they're looking for different kinds of activities.
You may have mentioned this before, but, but it looks like that between houses in several places, there is access down to the High Street.
Yes. So because of the topography, you know, you saw how those houses stepped up. So the streets were not coming through, plus we, the proposal was to convert High Street. So as a result, there is a little neighborhood trail through here, a neighborhood trail through here. And then, starting over at 8th, there's a trail that comes through the Town Home Project and then would connect all the way out to High Street. So there's a series of trails that are providing connectivity where there aren't streets.
Is a neighborhood trail, does it have, is it a sidewalk or is it gravel path or what is it?
No, it would be concrete. It's six feet wide with four-foot borders of landscape. There is, for this particular trail segment, because of the way the, they've kind of tipped the lots to make them, the fronts of the houses more interesting along the street in keeping with the neighborhood character guidelines. They are actually angling the, they are actually angling the trail through the space so it will average four feet, but it'll be wider in some places and narrow in others, so that we have a really good sightline from one end to the other, so you have a sense of where And I had a phone a friend moment at our last meeting, in which I had forgotten to note that the original 73 units, because of the increased width of the Park Drive Extension street, is not, they were going to have to relocate, reduce the number of units in the platte from 73 to 72. However, the Town Home North Project was also going through UVDC at the same time and they could increase that one by one. So they have shifted a unit between projects. But I just wanted to be clear on the record that this is 72, not 73 homes. That's my last one.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the, the doors and the arrangement of. I have a question about the doors and the arrangement of the doors versus the interior street in the plat. So are any of the homes in the current plat, all of the homes face one road interim, so they're all facing each other across a road?
Yes.
And then there, that, the one street that kind of looks like it dead-ends, that's the High Street, dead on the other side, the south, yeah. So there, I had this question earlier, but that street is going to dead-end there?
It serves access to the Lakeside neighborhood.
So Lakeside neighborhood would connect somewhere in here, and we wanted to make sure that there was enough length that they would be able to make the right choice for where that connected, and so they extended the road up to this point.
And until that time at which it does connect to something, is it going to be just a dead-end? And then between that dead-end and the proposed park area, that, is that?
You mean along here? Or, which is right here?
Right, so there, and then all the way up to where the overlook, and then that whole edge, is that, how would people walk along there? That's all proposed to have a trail that's connecting the whole length? Is that right?
Right. So what they propose from here, where the full road width would end to here, there would be 15 feet of paving that would remain, and the rest of the road would be taken up and folded into the landscape and recreational activities between the trail and the houses.
The homeowners association would maintain the whole length of that landscaping.
Yes.
So Vicki brought up a good point, that I didn't think a lot about that dead-end road. And there's one at the top, too, right? Not really.
Not really, because it would turn into this road.
So I think there needs to be some thought about what would hap -- about that dead-end.
The kind of signage, and if you drove in there, how you would turn around.
So you might drop an ecology block, right? Or do something to not allow
Cars.
Cars even to use it. It could be a complete non-vehicular space.
Oh, sure.
So you could put some temporary blockage in the pavement area, and then, you know, stripe it as four-square.
So what you're saying is, this section of roadway isn't needed right now, so we might retain it for the future use, but place bollards here in the interim.
And use it as a temporary amenity.
Sure, that's
Yes. And I think that's a great idea. I mean, one of the conditions we've put in place also is just, how are these designed to properly signal to a driver? And we felt that that was, so there's a condition on the plat, actually, requiring further design work, especially with public works operations. There will still be utilities under High Street, and they will need to be able to access it. They've been reviewing this all along and are on board with the plat. But we need to make sure that this both does a good job of signaling to drivers that they have to turn while allowing access for public works operations vehicles.
So there's a, there's the outlook node, which I think you said, if that goes forward as a park, that node is sort of set. And then there's
Well, it will be in this section someplace.
Okay. So my question is kind of about the arrangement of that side street, because it's like a side street right next to a crosswalk, is that?
So do you mean here?
Yeah. And then the walkway to the
This?
Yeah. So I guess I'm questioning why that is arranged like that.
Well, I think the idea, sorry, the mouse keeps going to sleep. I think the idea was that as you walked down here, that you would be able to just continue in a direct line, and it would be an obvious connection. You know, I don't think it's magic that it couldn't, for instance, be moved one lot. I just don't think that we had perceived that there was a reason. Maybe you're seeing something that we aren't?
Well, that is a vehicular street right there, right? That's a vehicular cross street.
This, and this. Would be like any other intersection. We are striping where the trail is in these locations where we have trails crossing, because we don't want drivers or pedestrians to be surprised by each other. And so we want that additional visual cue. Typically, in the city, we do not stripe crosswalks on roads of this scale. So we are striping it because we want it to have an additional visual presence.
Okay.
On Newport Way, we're actually, in the conceptual design, there are tables
Right.
For, at the regional, King County Regional Park. And I know there aren't many calming devices in the Highlands, but whenever you do see potential turning motions in such cross, in such proximity to a trail that we, by its very purpose, would see maybe a higher-than-typical use, I would, I don't know if that's within the scope of what we're, the question we're considering right now, but from a roadway treatment and calming device, but that's, please make note. Thank you.
Sure. I would be glad to. My only, we certainly have a ped-table standard and also, you know, a sort of sleeping policeman kind of standard that we use. You've never heard that term? I love that term. It's very British. To slow down cars. That's just more like a speed bump that isn't meant for pedestrian crossing. My only question would be, if a fire truck was coming down federal and making that turn, whether adding the raised crosswalk to it does anything? So I would just want to check with Eastside Fire and Rescue and Public Works Operations, but
You have comments? Do you have a question? So what are, I guess, I understand that the part, the conversion was, is tethered in some way, and then, I guess, what are the major questions as far as what's left to be decided with the plat? Like, what's the scope of the discussion here?
So the UVDC has made a recommendation with conditions. So certainly, the scope may be, you know, do you agree with these conditions? Do you, do you think Park Drive should be extended or not extended? Do you, there are conditions around how the park spaces would be built out. So there are a number of conditions, which, you know, the council is completely within its rights to comment on and/or edit, that's the word I'm looking for, based on concerns or questions they have about the appropriateness of how this area is developed.
I think I said this last time as well. I think the thoroughness with both the staff but also UDVC, I've read the conditions. I know they went through a couple of iterations. I don't have any changes that I'm going to ask or look for. Thank you for the answers to these questions. It's a very thorough body of work. I know it's not done yet, I mean, final, it's just a preliminary plat, but at this point, I'm comfortable with where we are, can, ready to move forward.
I agree with Paul.
The only, I agree. I think it seems very thorough. I, the one, probably because we were talking a lot about traffic calming in Old Town, which I realize is a very different neighborhood, but to me, to have a, to have that crosswalk, which we expect people to probably want to cut through and get to that outlook, to have the crosswalk aligned with this turning street, if you wanted to get down to those houses at the south end, it just, it looks like maybe that could be reworked, especially since there are some other ones that are just pedestrian, pedestrian crossing. So that was, that was my only thought. And again, that might be part of just my mindset, but it looks, the conditions, I think they do look very thorough, so I agree with my little councilmembers.
I mean, we'll certainly continue to do, you know, we do a preliminary site distance evaluation, and then we do another one when we get into the actual site work. My expectation would be that federal would have a stop sign at this location, that Street A probably wouldn't have one. And so, you know, as we dig into the site work permit, there's going to be further technical analysis to ensure it's, you know, appropriately and safely designed.
Want a motion to make a recommendation to the full council to approve the preliminary plat as presented?
I'm looking to see if there is language in here. There is nothing there. Yeah, there's no, there's no, the motion here is just about procedural. It's not about, but yeah, I would, I would move to, what's the verb? Accept? Recommend? Recommend approval of the preliminary plat as presented in this packet.
Regular business.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You have to ask for the negative.
Oh. Anyone opposed? Seeing as we only have three.
We have actually been chastised lately for not asking that question.
Okay.
So, thank you for adding.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. The next meeting is currently scheduled for August 2nd. Anything else? Then we're adjourned.
Thank you.